Hello?
This call has been unmuted. Yes.
Hi, this is Barbara Moore calling. And once again, I'm praying that you all will have a productive meeting. And also, I wanted to address a couple of things with Councilman Mays that was disturbing, coming from a councilperson who's always saying that you don't attack. But he was attacking me throughout the meeting because he didn't like what I was saying. And as far as my political skills and advocacy skills, him saying that they are whack, I feel that he needs to look at his service as a councilperson. I mean, saying that he has 100% attendance when you're jailed part of the time, you're sentenced part of the time, and then under the influence part of the time. So, don't try to call me out. You there to serve the people? Serve the people. And like I said, letting somebody speak three times, having them unmuted two times after they spoke the first time, he knows that's against council rules. But he did it because Councilman Davis was chairing the meeting.
Point of information.
He think he can get away with anything during that time I pause.
One moment, Ms. Moore. What's your counsel? Thank you. Uh, Councilman?
Yeah, if she know, do she know for 100% that I was intoxicated even when I went to court? Is that factual?
Thank you, Councilman Mays. You may continue, Ms. Moore.
Okay. But anyway, uh, you know. But anyway, um, and I have common sense. You even admitted that you were drinking, you had a cocktail on the job during the time that you were serving as a councilperson during the meeting. So, that's against the rules right there. But my point is, don't try to call me out and tell me I'm a lobbyist for Councilman Davis when you trying to lobby for yourself. You know, you there to serve the people. You trying to get reelected. That's why you allow one person to speak three times. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Councilman Mays. Yeah, thanks. I was eager to get a chance to speak. Um, Ms. Moore, you won't get a lot of my attention, but you will get attention when you're not factual. You can talk about me till the cows come home, but make it factual. God bless the citizens of the city of France. And let me keep dealing with some of the politics. I know the mayor, I know ordinance, I know law, and I know policy. So, come on with it, Ms. Moore. Come on with it, y'all. I'm gonna help tell the truth and make law and politics be right in the city of France. God willing, I ain't here by mistake. God is in control, not no mess. Thank you so much.
Um, this is a continued delay of the city business. I have asked him to leave because of that first warning. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't think you got the votes to remove me. I really don't. You wasting time. You called me out of order 'cause I said I learned to count in kindergarten with building blocks, and I'm counting votes here. Oh, that ain't germane. It is when I'm trying to count to see if the motion gonna postpone back to governmental action. You keep doing me like this, you might be gone. 'Cause this one is easy to see. And Ms. Winfrey Carter, I know folk ready to go, but we get five minutes, two rounds. And for her to be interrupting me as I'm counting the votes and talking about a motion, she need it. She need this sometime. 'Cause it's getting ridiculous. And I would be embarrassed if I was her. You know what another name for germane is? Relevant. Relevant, the opposite of relevant is irrelevant. You ain't got the votes. That's what I was talking about. That's relevant. So, you want me to vote yes to say I'm ignorant and wasn't germane? I ain't gonna vote yes. I'm gonna vote no. Once again, you wrong, in front of everybody in the world to see.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the appeal?
Um, yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I supported the appeal because, first, I don't think you have the authority to put him out, okay? Secondly, um, I think Mr. Mays was relevant when he was talking about the votes.
First warning, roll call, please. As a reminder, yes sustains the ruling of the chair, no overturns it.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Priestley.
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
No.
Ms. Burns.
No.
Ms. Herkenroth.
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
No.
Mr. Mays.
No.
The vote is three yes, four no.
Three yes, four no. The ruling of the chair is overturned. Mr. Mays, please wrap up your discussion.
No, I'm done with my discussion. You've helped me make my point more than I could.
All right. Is there any other discussion in the second round on the motion to send?
Okay, Janelle, please repeat the motion, and then we will have roll call on this, uh, we will have the vote on the motion.
The original motion was to censor the president, censor the president for 30 days, and then there was a, uh, modification to it saying that she would be silenced, but she could still vote. Ms. Fields.
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey.
Yes.
Ms. Galloway. Ms. Galloway.
Is she muted?
Apparently, she is muted.
Try to get her unmuted so she can vote.
Ms. Galloway? Yes, yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Hello.
Ms. Worthing? Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Is he muted? Oh, there he goes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra? Vote is five yes, two no.
Five yes, two no, the motion carries. So, I guess at this point in time, I am going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Davis, and you people will have to live with your consciences if you have any.
Excuse me? Lift the chair. Don't let one of them... Oh, lift the chair.
Councilman, uh, Carter.
You people?
Point of, point of order, point of information.
There's some hidden agendas up here, and they try to get you to be quiet because of fear. Mr. Mays is not fearful, and certainly I'm not.
Point of information.
But that man was absolutely wrong. Wrong is wrong, and right is right.
Just a second. Hold on just a second, Ms. Dick. What's your point, uh, Counselor?
Um, through you, Mr. President, to Councilman Davis, is Councilman Davis alluding to the fact that the council conspired with Mr. Pemberton to call Mr. Mays a fool and therefore provoke Mr. Mays to call him a fool?
So, I would like to get straight. If we have to follow the rules, can't you get the fool on the end of the counter to follow the rules too?
Look, Mr. President, it looked like he was pointing at me, but hey, look, every time he holler and call me a fool and then standing that out, I want him out of here now. I want him out. You been warned, I want you out. You a fool.
You a fool.
And that's why you finna be foolish and then walk out of here right now. Get him out of here. And there'll be an example for the other ones.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Our next speaker is, uh, Mrs. Jackie.
Mr. President, I would like to wait until they walk him out, 'cause he wanna, he wanna, he wanna show out. And so, I want everybody to see him showing out, walking politely up out of here. And it's too bad he gotta act like that in front of the little ones.
Mr. President, point of order.
Mr. President, point of order.
When the, when the, I can only deal at one point. Your point of order was first. Go ahead, Ms. Fields.
I'd like to refer you to Rule Number 27.3.
Tell me what the rule is.
Talk into my, uh, Councilwoman Fields, please. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay. I'd like to refer you to Rule Number 27.3. During any portion of any meeting, council members may not engage in any type of argumentative discourse with members of the audience at any time for any reason. Any council member or audience member who engages in this behavior during a meeting shall be removed.
You must be out your mind. Didn't you hear that man attack him?
It's Rule 27.3.
Maybe that's what she was talking to.
You must be out your mind, woman.
She was talking about him.
Councilman Davis and Councilman...
Mairey spun, Mr. President, through you to Councilwoman Galloway. Yes, I'm saying that. But for the simple fact, for the simple fact, anybody can have somebody come here to attack somebody and hide. Don't act surprised. I've been, I've been around a little while because the agreement of what's going on...
Point of order, Mr. President.
May I please have a point of order?
Point of order, Ms. Pemberton is going to order.
That man is saying that my husband...
Pemberton needs to be warned and...
That's what I'm talking about.
See, you're out of order. I'm, we're having discussion here.
That's what I'm talking about, right there. That was all plain.
Go ahead.
And that's his wife.
That's all plain.
Ms. Davis, you still have the floor.
That's his wife.
And this is what I'm saying. I'm not scared to speak to it, and I'm not tired.
This is crazy.
Wrong is wrong, and they got an agenda to get this man out of his seat, wrongfully. Ma'am, I'm not scared of you or your husband, but I'm saying this. It's one truth, and I'm the one that ain't scared to say it. Y'all need to leave Councilman Mays alone. I'm done.
Mr. President, could you ask her to be walked out since she wanna stand up and talk to Mr. Davis?
Councilman Garrow, you have the floor.
It ain't point of informa, point of order, Mr. President. This is ridiculous.
Councilman Garrow, you have the floor.
It's...
Point of order, can we wait until this is cleared out?
I'm there, but can I get you to wrap up? Because we really got some stuff to do here, 'cause you know, we gotta...
Well, let's see how the vote gonna go when I wrap up. When I wrap up and this vote goes south, then I'm gonna say, why he interfered with me to wrap up and didn't interfere with Ms. Galloway and them as they try to make their points for their crew?
Well, I tried to listen.
This is a serious motion for me, Mr. President.
My point of information.
What's your point?
Um, does Councilman Mays realize that I don't have a crew?
I think the...
I don't know what to realize. All I know is it's a serious motion, and I gotta watch and see how votes gonna go. People laughing, people laughing, something to do with my fate and as it relates to this council meeting. I done worked on a medical marijuana ordinance, it's a vote. I got appointments for Hurley Board, and I'm in the middle of this nonsense on a motion to remove me from my seat. Now, I don't know who got a clue, but I know I got one clue, two clue, and three clues. And so, my point is this, whenever I'm arguing for my seat, y'all can laugh and think it's a joke, but I take it very seriously. It's a rumble going down. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fields.
In any case, I left upset. And to say that a person who addresses bullying behavior or threatening behavior is just as bad, or calling that person names, is like a woman who has been raped and saying he's my rapist. Does that make sense to you? I feel violated.
Oh.
I've been threatened, and when I say that I've been threatened, it's, oh, you feel threatened. You don't feel threatened, you don't feel raped. You are raped, you are threatened, and it's a serious matter that is allowed to continue over and over again since November. And if you'd like, I can show you the video. I've transcribed the things that have been said to me by Mr. Mays. We are standing here today. We're done. And I would like the fairness of the rules to be enforced. And if, and if we don't have rules, I don't see how we can govern, because Mr. Guerra, you have to stand up for what's right. I too wanna get the city business done, but I don't wanna do it at the expense of my colleagues, and it's the women, Ms. Fields, Ms. Galloway, and I who are mostly attacked, and it's not dealt with. So, I will stand up for what's right before I'm gonna just bow down and let him say whatever he wants for us to just continue. It's not right, and I'm gonna always, always do what's right.
Councilwoman Winfrey Carter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we're gonna stand up for what's right. Now, is it right for someone to come up here during public speaking to attack one of your colleagues? Is it right? Kate Fields, since, since you and, and Ms. Worthing, you all over these rules and you wanna make sure the rules are followed, is it right for someone to send out emails, 80-something emails?
Point of information.
No. Is it right? Because it's a hoax!
No, 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 no.
Is it right?
Councilwoman Winfrey Carter. There is a privileged motion, and we can't overrule it, can't overlook it, what your...
But I'm talking about the rules. Everybody wanna enforce rules. Let's enforce rules then.
Councilwoman, there's a privileged motion. Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Galloway, what's your point of information?
Council President, is the emails germane to what we are talking about right now?
Well, I think it is. Now, let me tell you what. Listen now, listen, you got, you asked me a question, I need to answer you.
Please do.
Because we're talking about rules.
We're talking about rules.
And we're talking about...
Tell us, folks, there's a double standard here. There's a double standard here.
Come on, calm down, calm down, Jen.
No, I'm upset. I'm getting upset.
Well, it's okay, but we're...
We been sitting here for a whole hour. I got things I gotta do.
So, go ahead. You have the floor. You have the floor.
Do I have the floor?
You've got the floor.
Now.
But, but listen.
No, but this is too much. This is too much. Right is right and wrong is wrong. Councilman Mays was appointed to sit in that seat. And I am gonna vote no to have him removed, because quiet is kept. Those emails, that should've been dealt with.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
And that person should've been removed. So, if nobody's gonna be removed, then Congress...
We got a privileged motion on the floor.
I'm done.
What's your motion?
Could you ask her to lower her volume? It's with the microphone, it's quite loud.
She's done. And then, I think after her... Councilman Mays.
Yeah, Mr. President. Ms., 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 Ms. Winfrey Carter got the right to show her emotion.
She's got the right to show her emotions, Councilman, but I want her to con, to lower the, to lower the, to lower the vote.
You want me to calm down, but I'm livid right now. Do I seem like I'm just as wild? I'm telling you, I'm livid. 'Cause I'm looking at this thing, and I'm counting very well. I don't know where you stand. I can see Mr. Griggs nodding with him. Ms. Galloway seem to be with him. I'm looking at this. So, since this motion is remove me, when you remove me, remove Ms. Fields for a violation of the rules, remove Ms. Worthing for a violation of the rules for these attacks. So, this is a substitute motion. Now, we'll see if it's second, and then we'll go into discussion on what they violate. Let's have a removing party. I so move.
So, your, your motion is to remove, say it again, Councilman Mays, please. Say, repeat your, repeat your motion.
My motion is that she fixing to be removed when they vote to remove me, 'cause I'm mixing us all in one motion. This is a substitute motion to remove Ms. Fields for her violation, and we'll discuss them, leaving and ain't getting your permission, Ms. Worthing for making personal attacks on me and Bull Garrett, and I so move.
Yes.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Mr. President.
Councilman Davis.
I was, I was seconding it.
Mr. President.
It's been moved, seconded. Is there a discussion? Councilwoman, uh, Galloway, then Councilwoman Fields.
This has turned into a huge web or smoke and mirror event. There is no question that we are talking about rules, but today, the specific rule that we're talking about is Councilman Mays called Mr. Pemberton a fool, engaged in argumentative behavior with him today. We know that the emails allegedly were a violation, but did the attorney's office or anybody move forward with that situation? Today, we are speaking about the behavior that affected one constituent tonight.
Point of information, point of information.
Councilman Mays, what's your point of information?
Does she realize we talking about the behavior of three folks now?
Again, smoke and mirrors.
Go ahead.
This was about behavior between Mr. Pemberton and Councilman Mays, whether he was disrespected or not. All of this other thing can happen actually in a committee meeting. Whether Mr. Pemberton was violated and mistreated by Mr. Mays as much as Mr. Mays, and we all agree that Mr. Pemberton calling Councilman Mays a fool was out of order. He was removed because he was out of order. And now, the motion on the floor should be pertaining to that incident and that incident only. And the fact that we have been able to spin this into a web of things that bring up what happened in November, it should be appalling to us as council people. Not saying that we haven't all violated the rules in one manner or the other, but today we're simply asking, was Mr. Pemberton disrespected by Councilman Mays as much as Councilman Mays disrespected him?
Councilwoman Fields, then we have Mr. Guerra, then Ms. Winfrey Carter, then Councilman Mays.
I call the question.
Question's been called. Is there any support? There is support from Ms. Galloway. Madam Clerk, roll call.
This is on the call for the question.
This is on the call for the question.
Ms. Fields?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, three no, and call for the question.
Okay, the call for the question is the, then it's the secondary motion by Councilman Mays to remove Councilwoman Fields and Councilwoman Worthing. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. President, point of information.
What's your point?
That was not just to remove them, but remove me and them.
Oh, to remove, okay, to remove, that's right.
That's what it was, Ms. Galloway. I said I added them to it. That's what it was. Let's make it clear. And I say three of them. That's what it was.
We gonna go back to it.
That's what it was.
Okay, good deal. You're right, you're right, Councilman Mays.
I know I'm right.
Yes, sir. Okay, so the, the, the...
Let's get it right.
The substitute motion was to remove Councilman Mays, Councilwoman Fields, and Councilwoman Worthing.
Yeah, for breaking rules.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Guerra?
No.
Ms. Fields? Okay, the motion fails, uh...
Mr. President.
If I could announce it, please, for the record.
Go, go right ahead.
Zero yes, nine no.
Mr. President.
What's your point?
Since the substitute motion failed, do we go back to the main motion, or do we just reject it?
Are we on discussion on the main motion?
Could you repeat that main motion, please?
Point of order, Mr. President.
What's your point, Councilman Mays?
Is she under a point of information right now?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'm asking to be...
Mr. President, I just have a question.
Sure.
Um, when a substitute motion is, is made and supported, and we vote on it, we don't, does it automatically end discussion, and then we vote on the original motion? I'm just trying to get clear. So, but do we go back to the original motion's discussion, or are we now forced to vote on the original motion?
I believe we go back to discussion.
That's correct.
Can we check the rules for that?
Okay, I got Councilman Guerra.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays.
I thought you already had called on him, and he called for the question in the last one. Now, you can call on who you want, but we know what's going on here, and so, I'm trying to get the, um, the, um, the floor. Now, you can give it to him, but then you're right, but point of order, my point of order is, didn't you call on him, and then he used his, and I'm trying to get the floor?
Yes!
He used his.
He used his, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah.
Point of information, no, I mean, I'm sorry. Point of information, Mr. Guerra, I thought had already said, call for the question. Is that...
Have he used the floor today?
Point of, point of information.
Yeah.
I said call for the question. Ms. Fields supported it. We called for the question, and we went to the vote, and when we went back, I assumed we went back into discussion to get the first motion.
Point of order, Mr. President.
So, I call, I raised my hand again.
Point of order, that ain't no, what is he doing?
You got the floor.
Mr. President, you can, it's a slippery slope when this, when this, when this, um, baton is being passed and folks is throwing out calls for the question. I seen Ms. Galloway clearly get upset when I asked that Ms. Fields be put out along with Worthing for breaking rules. It clearly, to me, she seemed to get upset. And I'm telling you, I guarantee you, my...
Point of information.
Here we go.
Yes, ma'am, what's your point?
Um, Mr. President, is Councilman Mays a mind reader? How can he say such a thing?
Point of order, Mr. President. Point of order.
That's not true.
May I proceed?
Proceed.
I wanna proceed because I don't think Ms., Ms. Worthing is a right mind reader, but I didn't hear you say point of information. How is you a mind reader? Is he really threatening you? She can't read my mind? So, Ms. Galloway, clearly, we under different treatment and perception because Ms. Grig, Ms. Worthing can't read my mind. See, in order to remove somebody from the elected seat, you better have a public hearing. And under the charter, you have a public hearing, and you remove them.
Just a second, just a second, Ms. Mays. I'm hearing too much. I can't, I can't hear.
There's a lot of confusion going on. I'm glad that Ms. Winfrey Carter raised her voice. She got the right to. There's a lot of confusion going on. I'm glad that Ms. Winfrey Carter raised her voice. She got the right to. She got the right to. We didn't get elected to speak the way y'all want us to speak. Um, you know, I really wish you guys wouldn't try to throw me out of my elected seat.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Mr. Mays is mocking council members, not sure which one he's attacking.
No, I said the way that you want me to speak. I'm talking about how I should speak according to y'all. I wasn't mocking nobody, but seeing I don't talk like that.
Uh, no, I want you to rule, Mr. President.
Proceed.
I'm glad you said proceed. This and she mad 'cause they want me to talk like this. I talk like, oh, I really wish you wouldn't appeal me. And she mad because she talking about I'm mocking council members 'cause I said they want me to talk, oh, I wish they really wouldn't do this. I'm talking about me. But that's how screwed up her perception is. And then when they talk about how screwed up I am and I say how screwed up they is, that's where the confusion start.
Now can we wrap up so we can...
I'm gonna wrap up, but I sure hope you don't vote to throw me out my seat, Mr. President, 'cause I'm looking at the votes of you, Mr. Griggs and Mr. Gara that's gonna decide this. And I hope you, Mr. Gara, don't vote to throw me out my seat. Whatever y'all do in y'all business.
Mr. Gara now.
Call the question.
Questions have been called. Is there support? There has been support. Madam Clerk. This is for the question. Call the question.
Ms. Winfrey? I'm sorry, Mr. Winfrey.
Question, yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Gara?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, two no for the call for the question.
Okay, so now we're back to the previous question.
Now we vote.
Point of order, Mr. President. What's going on? We had roll call.
Ms. Winfrey, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Hold on, just a second.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
You had roll call.
No.
So it's, uh, six yes and three no. I, I do apologize, Ms. Winfrey.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Gara?
Abstained. I was in the committee room.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
No.
Okay, the vote is, um, four yes, four no and one abstention.
So it fails. All right, then we're back to public speaking.
It makes me worry. That's all I've got to say. Thank you. Thank you. But this here appointment has nothing to do with charter. This is a real appointment of Mass Transportation Authority, MTA Board, and that's all it does. Well, any other discussion?
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Mays.
If you interrupt him or attempt to interrupt him, understand he was not germane. I think he was demeaning. You had no...
Oh, Councilman Mays, I'm chairing this meeting. Uh, please, let's, let's show a little respect today. How about that?
Point of order. Would you move on my point of order that he was demeaning and you kind of said, that he was demeaning, you know, and...
I'm not gonna give balls down with you. I'm lenient.
My point of...
You don't babysit this meeting. Uh, we don't need that. We grown. Uh, any other discussion?
Chairperson Fields, point of order. I meant, Chairperson Davis, I'm confused. Point of order.
I'm gonna tell you like this.
Point of order.
Please, please stay in this meeting. I'm, I'm, I beg of you. Please stay in this meeting. Any other, look, what's your...
Point of order.
What rule have been broken?
You ignoring my point of order. I've said it three times and it's saying that you don't... You shall be removed if you didn't keep ignoring, point of order. You ignoring the point of order. That's the rule right now that's relevant. You recognizing that?
I acknowledge you, man.
You didn't earlier though.
The rules, Madam Clerk, I see there's nothing.
That's correct.
Discussion item.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, it's fine, I'm saying I'm the senior black councilman. I didn't vote for Trump, didn't vote for Kate Fields and my attendance record has been well. I wouldn't care if I never get a second on my appeal. You hear my voice is loud. We in discussion item. I'm elected. If you think if this funky in March, wait till Davis and some of these folks who don't know what they talking about get to May, June and July. I done seen this movie before. I seen it with Juan, Chris, Davis, Vicky Van Buren, Carrie Nelson, Jackie Popper used to make faces back.
Point of information, Councilman Mays. Point of information. Is this a discussion item 'cause you rambling all over the place? I'm trying to understand the rambling.
Yeah, it's a discussion item. I made it up. And I ain't rambling all over the place and, and, and I got the floor. And you might want to interrupt it 'cause I'm talking about you and the people around you. Beg your pardon.
This foolishness ain't gonna happen. Get your...
It ain't foolishness. It's real life politics. And if you calling something I'm saying technically foolishness, you foolish to think that. This ain't foolishness. We in a city council meeting. This is a real meeting. Point of order. Point of order.
We got city business to do. What's your point?
Point of order. We done. We better adjourn. Point of order.
I said, what's your point? You, you high? What's going on?
That's you interrupting me 'cause you don't like my discussion item. And you out of order. And it ain't foolish. Not rule on that. I am making it make sense. Rule whether or not you think I'm out of order in discussion item.
You way out of order. You way out of order.
Okay, I appeal the ruling of the chair. That I'm out of order in the discussion item. Before I close, I'm appealing that.
There's appeal of the ruling of the chair. Out of order for Councilman Mays. Once again, there's appeal of the ruling of the chair. I'm gonna go even more lenient. I'm asking my colleagues, there's appeal of the ruling of the chair. We have city business due. It dies for a lack of a second, Councilman. We down to additional...
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn while I still got the floor. If I got, I move to adjourn. That's your fair.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Mr. Vice President?
It's been moved and property second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Gara? Ms. Fields? Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing? Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no.
The vote's six yes, zero no. I'll see my colleagues at five thirty right back here for city council meeting. Have a great break.
Boy, I sure hope that get out of there on time. I'm out to prove a point. Now these folks are more rich fields. They quit interrupting me.